Is it working?
Yep, it's working.
It's working now, okay. Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, September 10th, 2013. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Is there anyone here from the public this evening who'd like to speak? Anyone at all from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on. We'll call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Katie?
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Dr. D'Amico?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Present. All present. Next, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Regular school committee meeting, August 27th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Dr. D'Amico?
It's listed as regular school committee, and I believe it was actually special committee of the whole meeting.
No, the special school committee of the whole was on the 20th, was it not?
No.
Alright.
What I'm looking at the packet, it says special committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, we'll change that to special committee of the whole.
Point of information, is it a special committee of the whole, given that it was announced in the meeting before that it was taking place, that following week?
The date was not actually announced at our meeting. We said to be announced, and then I talked to you guys afterwards to see if that date was a good date, so the public didn't know at that time.
It was announced that it would be the following Tuesday. The place and the time was to be determined.
We can hold off on this for clarification until the next meeting, if you'd like. Dr. D'Amico?
I have another question. Is there a reason that we are not voting on the minutes of 8:20?
Because those minutes aren't already yet. They still need to be edited.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we would like to table this to the next meeting, postpone it to the next meeting, and get the proper wording for it. Do I have a motion to postpone this until we get the proper wording for the title of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on postponement? Seeing none, all in favor? All in favor, we're postponing until the next meeting for clarification of the type of meeting it was. Thank you. Next is the Chairwoman's announcements. Under Chairwoman's announcements, I just have some housekeeping to do on the agenda. We didn't think that Mr. Nebuchol was going to be here this evening, so we had put in Patricia Gardner, so Mr. Nebuchol was ever able to make it, so we're just going to put him in there for superintendent reports. Also, under School Committee Actions, the accounts would be J.J.F., not J.F.F., so we're going to just housekeep on that. And we're also going to just take out, waive all the readings as an emergency in A, so you don't have to have readings as an emergency basis for a rescinding of a policy, so just want to take that out. And under B, we're just going to take out per the state. And that's, those are how I'll read those tonight. Other than that, I do not have any further Chairwoman's announcements. Next will be reports. Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Rosa, welcome.
Okay, then. Well, good evening to everyone. I have quite a few announcements tonight. To start with, Stuko, Student Council, held a successful bottle drive last Saturday. Bottles are still being collected. One can donate them on the football game that's going to be held this Friday, or one can call the school and ask to speak with Mr. Ricardo Carrero. The first football game of the season will be held this Friday at 7:00 PM at the Old High School against Intasqua. There will be events this Saturday, September 14th, from 7:00 to 10:00, held by Student Council for grades 9 to 12. There will be a mandatory concussion seminar Wednesday night, which is tomorrow, at 6:30 PM for all athletes, parents, and coaches. Open house will be Thursday, the 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 for both high and middle school. Just an early reminder that homecoming will be October 19th. Also, Aspira will be holding a Hispanic Heritage event. That will be October 11th at 6:30 PM, Mark Chris Hall on Chestnut Street. Tickets are $20. The middle school soccer team starts the 16th of September for all interested in playing. Now, a little on the sports that are going on, since it is fall season. So the soccer team has played two games. Field hockey has also played two games, and has already won the first of the year. Girls' cross country won its first meet. Golf team started today. It is the first year that all teams are using the fields at the new high school. And for those interested, the athletic schedule is available on the school website, if you want to come to the games, or just come and cheer for us. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have presentations. We do not have any presentations this evening. Moving on to report of the Superintendent, Mr. Nebuchol.
No, no credit reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, moving ahead too fast. Guess I want to be out. But anyways, Agenda Number Eight, School Committee Reports, I apologize. Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Policy, Mrs. Quinney?
The Policy Subcommittee met on September 3rd, and we reviewed, excuse me, the new student activities account, which we'll be going over later, reviewed the old policy, and then looked at the new policy that we're hoping to adopt. We also decided to send out an email to the district leadership team to see if there were particular policies that they'd like us to prioritize. The next meeting has yet to be set. Thank you.
Thank you. Negotiations Subcommittee, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a meeting tomorrow night at Cole Avenue to resume negotiations with the S.E.A., the Southbridge Education Association. That's it.
Oh, thank you. And Family and Community Engagement, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Uh, Mrs. Congdon, sorry. Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a meeting Tuesday, September 3rd, and the members present were myself and Laura McLaughlin. Members of the public were Erin Quinney and Kara Donovan. And at that time, we reviewed last year's established mission and goals, and we discussed conducting two public input forums with the committee as a whole in November and May. I'm going to be drafting a proposal to the Chair. We discussed a calendar of upcoming events and meetings and speakers for the year, and I was in the process of reviewing the dates with other Subcommittee members and confirming speakers to come speak at the Family and Community Meeting. We also went over and compiled a survey that we wanted to, we emailed to all the members of the school committee and wanted to hand out at open house, so we could get input from all of the parents of the community to fill out this survey and give us some feedback of different questions. So actually, at this time, I wanted to move to approve this survey by the committee as a whole.
We have a motion to move, to vote for the approval for the survey, and a second by Dr. D'Amico. I believe, because this is a School Committee Action, it would have to go under the Voting Session section, so it would go under School Committee Action, so at that time, you would have to amend the open meeting laws to add a vote agenda to the item. So it wouldn't be done here at this time. Okay, so do you want to withdraw that motion, and then we can do it later on?
Sure. I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, we'll withdraw the second. So we withdraw the motion and the second on that. Anything else?
Also, just on the agenda, it says Communication, Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee. We voted on July 2nd to change that name, so it should be listed as Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee.
That's correct. That's why I said it that way. I crossed it out on mine, so we'll have that correct on the next one. Okay, now we'll get to presentations, which we don't have any this evening. And Item 10, Report of the Superintendent, Mr. Nebuchol.
Yes, my report is on the opening of school and the first week of school, and I think I've said many, many times that my goal was to have a smooth opening, teachers at their duty stations, students where they're supposed to be, and schedules and so on, and I think we accomplished that on all of our schools. The elementary schools both opened very well. There was a variety of back-to-school activities. Eastford Road opens a little bit later, and that also went very smoothly. The Middle and High School also went extremely smoothly, quietly, and orderly. That's what I can say, and that was the goal. And I just wanted to thank all of the faculty and staff and community members that contributed to making that happen. I think I was joking with one or two school committees, the biggest issues we had were a couple of buses that changed their routes without telling us, which we don't control. So that was something that was pleasant, rather than having a whole host of issues. And my goal again was, with all of the administrators, was that if it opens up in an orderly fashion, the likelihood of it continuing increases. If it opens up in a disorderly, chaotic way, that will be very hard to stem. So that was goal one, accomplished. The second aspect was that, as she mentioned, new athletic director programs and so on, and we got off to a pretty good start. I saw in the paper today, or yesterday, that there were, soccer is my sport, as I think everybody in the world knows, okay? Just want to clarify that again. I want to thank Dr. O'Leary for putting on the concussion workshop tomorrow evening. I think it's something that everyone has to go and understand, because obviously, that is a major concern in contact sports, and contact sports can be certainly, field hockey, soccer, and all those sports, and then being able to diagnose and then deal with that is critically important. I think the NFL settlement this past week exemplifies that you can't, that if you don't treat it properly and early, it can have long-range effects. So I want to thank everyone for that. I guess the Western saying about knock on wood, this is...
Laminate.
Laminate, laminate, but that's okay. Close enough. And my goal is to keep it going that way. I know things will happen and issues come up, but that's life, when you have 2,200 kids in four locations with over 400 employees and a community looking at it very carefully. We will do everything we can to ensure that safety and welfare, number one, is taken care of, and number two, that education improves substantially for all of the students. And we have a number of issues and programs, not issues, number of initiatives is what I meant to say, in place to deal with that. We met today with our Focus on Results group, and that is a state grant that's working to develop methods of evaluation, assessment, and professional development, so we focus on what's essential, and that's the teaching and learning that goes on in the classrooms. All of the schools have developed their focuses, FOCI actually, but at their sites, and it's primarily on literacy, comprehension, and vocabulary building. Those are the building blocks for anyone to be successful in school. And each one of those schools has an instructional leadership team that has currently been organized and will be trained during the course of the year to ensure that that focal point is adhered to, and that activities and so on are conducted in such ways that all of our students become extremely literate. We're also, part of it is that with ANET, which is Achievement Network, which we've had for the last couple of years, and then we're looking at the same issues of literacy and numeracy, obviously, and we're going to be focusing very closely on our two populations that have fared rather poorly in the last seven or eight years of this community, Special Education and ELL. We're going to use, look at all of our programs and use the lens of ELL and Special Education Assured, or those students are getting what they deserve and what they're entitled to. And at the same time, making sure that teachers recognize that there is diversity, and that they teach to it and work to it. So that's part of our focus this year. And obviously, the ultimate goal is to be level 3.9 by next spring. We'll be at a level four status, and we're working on that. So I just want to say again that everyone cooperated, and that's one of the great things. And there are a lot of good people here, and a lot of good things are happening, and we're going to make sure the school system is one of the shining lights in this community, and we're just going to keep working together. And what I asked the public to do is, and I think a couple of school committees members have said that publicly, is that give us the benefit of the doubt once in a while. Don't assume the worst first, okay? And there's a whole proper procedure for who to call and so on, and then obviously, teachers, principals, and then central service personnel will work with you. So I'm very optimistic. It was a long, tough January to August, and we got most of our budget straightened out. We have all the certified people in place. The buildings are clean, the buses are running. That's the big knock on. And the infrastructure and processes and procedures are being carefully reviewed and amended where necessary and moving forward, so I don't want to take up too much time. But that's, I do want to say that, that we're in a whole lot better shape today than we were seven or eight months ago. And that's through hard work of a lot of people and the school committee. I want to thank the school committee for being supportive of all of the changes and adjustments that we've had to make to the school system to get it to where it needs to go, be, and then, and there'll be more coming down the road. So thank you very much, and I want to thank the public for being cooperative.
Thank you. Moving on to School Committee Actions. A, Vote to Rescind Policy J.J.F. Student Activity Accounts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Quinney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. McLaughlin. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that J.J.F. was our current student activity policy that we are looking to replace. It was fairly basic and mostly restated the sections of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 7147, which stated what the law requires regarding student activity accounts. And we're looking to replace it with a more thorough policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the reason why it's being rescinded instead of replaced, did you want to address that?
Oh, sure. Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Sorry. Go right ahead. Policy J.J.F. is currently in the student section of the policy manual. Where it's dealing specifically with student activity accounts, we felt that it was more appropriate to be placed in the finance section of the policy manual, so it will have new letters, D.L., and it's, as I said, a more extensive policy. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Dr. D'Amico?
Madam Chair, can you please reread the new motion as it stands?
Sure. It's Vote to Rescind Policy J.J.F. Student Activity Accounts.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes. Seven yeses, motion passes.
I didn't vote.
Oh, did you miss Mrs. Congdon?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mrs. Congdon?
Seven yeses, but motion passes. Moving on to B, Vote to Waive All Readings on an Emergency Basis and Adopt Policy D.L. Student Activity Accounts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Quinney, second?
Second.
By Mrs. Donovan. Do you have any discussion, Mrs. Quinney? Did you want to?
Certainly. The Policy D.L. also covers what is required of the student activity accounts within the Massachusetts General Law, and it also has other specifics as to the role of principals within it, and certain safeguards, such as no checks will be written to cash, and many more processes involved. Karen Sheridan has drafted an entire packet regarding student activity accounts that I will post, both Policy D.L. and the whole of that packet that has all the procedures that will be followed in order to ensure that all the accounts are in order. And also within Policy D.L., it says that all the student activities accounts will be audited by, at a minimum, once a year, by either the finance director or another town entity. So another safeguard. That is the sum of the change.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. D'Amico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question through you. Is this policy modeled by existing policies that we have in state? Was it recommended by the mask, or?
It includes basically everything that was in J.J.F. that we just rescinded. It also has other things within it. Karen Sheridan has reviewed it, and this is what she thought were the appropriate safeguards. And it's also mirrored sort of after other policies in other school districts.
Well, the reason I ask is that I really don't think it's smart, accepting a policy that really was not modeled after what exists in the state, because we have done that before, right? And then decided to go with what state has recommended in their policy package, so we remain consistent, and we don't omit things that might be important, and that's where my question is. So we have an assurance that this was modeled appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Seven yeses, motion passes. Moving on to C, Vote to Appoint Mrs. Erin Quinney as Liaison for the Southbridge Sped Pact. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Donovan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Congdon. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Dr. D'Amico?
Madam Chair, at this time, I would like to make a motion to waive the rules and add Agenda Item 11.D. Vote to Approve a Survey of the Southbridge School Committee as distributed to school committee and corrected on September 4th.
Alright, so we have a motion. We're actually going to be waiving the open meeting laws to do this, because it's a vote. So it will be a motion to waive the open meeting laws to add a vote to Agenda D. It would be Item D.
Okay.
11.D. To approve a survey. So we have a motion by Dr. D'Amico? Second by Dr. O'Leary. Discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was there, present at that meeting, so I'm familiar with the survey. I was just wondering, through you to the Superintendent, if you had a chance to look at it and agree with it as well.
I did respond to Mrs. Congdon already, so I thought it was well done and short enough that people could do it and so on, and it asked the questions that we're looking for. And we're trying to get the community and the parents involved in joining the PTAs and everything else, so I think it was specific to parents and the community in that respect.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Point of information?
What is the question before the School Committee at this time?
The question is the motion to waive the open meeting law to add the vote to the agenda to approve the survey. That is the motion that's on the table. So we're having a discussion to that motion.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I do have a discussion on this end, this agenda. I am going to pass the gavel to the Vice Chair. I do not feel comfortable waiving open meeting law rules to add in a vote agenda that has not been voted by the Subcommittee to come forward to the School Committee. So at this time, I'm going to excuse myself and let the Vice Chair take over.
Thank you.
Use your left hand.
Thank you. We have a motion to...
Two motions?
Wait. Actually, we have two motions, correct? A motion to waive the open meeting law and a motion to add an agenda item. Is that correct?
It's the same motion.
Same.
Okay, one motion. So we have a motion to waive the open meeting law and add a vote to agenda to approve the previously disseminated student survey to be distributed at student open house nights.
Point of information? The how would we be waiving open meeting law by voting on said vote?
That, Mrs. Quinney, I do not know.
How would you be waiving it, or why would you be waiving it?
I didn't, yes.
I will answer that, because I'm the one that is not voting it. The item did not come forward before the agenda was sent out. When the agenda is sent out, that's the agenda. When you're changing on something on the agenda in the vote area, or any area, specifically the vote area, you're changing the open meeting laws by adding that. The open meeting laws frown upon changing the agenda to add that. So therefore, I am withdrawing, and that is the reasoning, and it is in this booklet that was given to us by M.A.S.C. on page 13 at the bottom. To, it says, "Important Requirements: The public posting of a meeting must include those items that the Chair may reasonably anticipate arising at the meeting. If your posting does not include such items, they may not be raised." So I just, I'm not comfortable with it, so I'm staying back from it. Thank you.
Dr. D'Amico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is silly. This is really an interference on the Chair's part to good-intentioned efforts to move certain initiatives in the district forward. I believe that we have a survey posted on our website, School Department website, that was never voted on. Technically, I don't even believe we need to bring this up for a vote. I think Superintendent's approval of the survey instrument is sufficient, and I'm really, I'm really not feeling comfortable, by the way this is being run. This is silly, and this is interference with goodwill of the people on the School Committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Quinney?
I move to amend the current motion to just state that we will be, that we will move to approve the survey as compiled by the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee to vote on as a committee as a whole.
I second that amendment.
We have a motion on the floor to amend the motion to strike the language, waive open meeting law from the question. So a motion to add a vote to the agenda item to approve the survey that was prepared by the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee for dissemination at the school open houses next week. Dr. D'Amico has seconded that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion to amend? No discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Dr. O'Leary?
Ms. abstain.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Excuse me, abstain. Well, you can abstain.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes. So the motion to amend carries. Now we have the main motion on the floor, which is to add a vote to the agenda to approve the survey that was prepared by the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee for dissemination at the school open houses next week. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Abstain.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Abstain.
Five affirmative, two abstentions, the vote carries. I'm going to pass the gavel back to Mrs. Woodruff.
Thank you.
Moving on to unfinished business. Is there any other unfinished business this evening? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one question, and it was kind of sparked by our student advisor this evening. Maybe through you to Mr. Nebberco, she mentioned that all our sports are now taking place at the new fields of the Southbridge Middle High School. Have those fields officially been turned over to us from the town? Or are we still working on that part of it?
I can't answer that, because I was never on the building committee. And through the process, and from my experience in other districts, fields are usually the last things that get completed and often without the official turnover, because you don't want to have... Take everything too soon, because there might be some concerns, repairs, and things like that. But at the same time, you don't want to be able to use it, because you have kids there. So it's a practical matter. And a technical aspect of it would be the official acceptance. So once you accept it, it becomes yours, and you can't keep coming back for other issues. Right now, I think there are some drainage issues there and some other situations that need to be rectified. And the last year, there was the issue of the fields, and they were used too soon, and the sod and everything else had to be reseeded. So for kids not to play, because the town hasn't turned it over, would do a disservice to the kids.
I agree. Okay. Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else unfinished business? Seeing none, moving on to new business. The next regular school committee meeting will be held September 24th, 2013, in the council chambers. Any other new business? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, again, piggybacks on what Ms. Burrito said and also Mrs. Donovan. My daughter plays on the varsity soccer team for the town, I mean, for the town, but also for the school. And they've had a couple of really hard-fought games recently. They're a very young team. But this isn't just about soccer. This is about our school, its environment, and its culture. And I really hope that people come and support all the teams. Sometimes it's been the case that the other team, even though they have to travel a far distance, has more people in attendance than the home team. And because we have late buses from the schools, it would be nice if some of the students stayed to support the teams. Or if the members of the general public would go to the district website, look at the schedules, and see if they can attend a football game, a track meet. We're always talking about the need for entertainment and something to do in the town, activities. And this would be a good way to show the support for the district, the schools, their teams, and especially these kids who are really, really working hard. So I just wanted to put that in everybody's ear for consideration. Thank you.
Any other new business? Dr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just to add to what Ms. McLaughlin had said, remember Friday night is Tantasco, not the official Thanksgiving Day rival, but nonetheless, a heartfelt rival for the Southbridge High School Football Team. So enjoy all the fun when you get there, guys. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Speaking of that, there was a very nice article in the local paper about the girls' soccer team the other day, and the fact that they're very young, a number of middle school kids on there, and they managed to score a goal, and they lost three to one. So I thought that was heartening, that the media is coming out there and then writing things about the building. And sports is something you build from the bottom up. You get kids involved at an early age, develop them, and then when they get up to the high school level, they should be pretty proficient. So I was... So I got the schedule today, and the soccer team, obviously, that's where I'll be going in the afternoons. And I'll make one or two football games during the course of the year. I know Friday is a big game. It's the opening season and the home game, and a number of the staff members are all planning on going. So it'll be great.
Mrs. Donovan, did you have?
Yes, I did. Thank you. Just one quick thing. I meant to mention it at our last meeting and forgot to do that. What I wanted to do was just thank Mr. Ronald Plouffe from our town's Recreation Committee. I know that he had worked hard with Mr. Y., who's our West Street School gym teacher. And they brought back our summer recreation program for the kids that was over at West Street this summer. It ran for, I believe, it was either six or eight weeks. And my own children had attended that, and it was very successful. They had a wonderful time. They had some great counselors there and a lot of wonderful activities. They fed them lunch. And I just thought, as a parent and as a school member, it was very, very well done. And I hope that next summer, they can carry on and build upon what they started this summer, because they did a very good job. So I just wanted to thank them for their time and effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you want to do something about that?
No, that's just for you guys right now.
Thank you.
Mrs. Congdon?
I just wanted to say that the district website has been updated with all of the current positions and phone numbers. And I'd like to thank the superintendent for working hard towards updating that. And also that during the open houses at Eastford Road, Charlton Street, and West Street, the PTA will be hosting a book fair, so parents can go in and purchase books. And all of that will go back to benefit the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rosa?
Hi. I just wanted to remind parents about the meeting, the open house that is on September...
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yes. September 19th. A lot of parents last year came over, I remember, saying that they really felt that they were involved in the school and giving some complaints. So this is a perfect opportunity. There's a lot of new teachers. Everything is new. A lot of new rules. We went from passing to no rules to having many rules. It's a lot of changes. But if you really want to come and meet the teachers, see where your kids are, it's a good opportunity. I recommend all parents to go, talk to the teachers, see where your kids are, and get to know the area. And also about the sports, go and support your children playing. They need the support. You won't believe it, but supporting your kids actually helps a lot for them to win. And remember, this Friday is the game, but bring your bottles and cans. We do have a bottle drive, and we really need the money for student council to support events. So bring that with us, and that'll be great. Thank you.
Mrs. Quinney? I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers and paraprofessionals and district leadership team who got this year off the ground running. I think... I know my children have had a great start to the new year, the new school year, and I've heard nothing but positive feedback from people in the community. So I know that it doesn't just kind of happen, and that a lot of hard work was put into it and a lot of planning on behalf of teachers and principals and the rest of the district leadership team. And I just wanted to say that, not only as a school committee member, but as a parent, I am very thankful for the start that the school year is off to. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we have no executive session this evening, so can I have a motion for adjournment, please? Dr. O'Leary, for a motion, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Congdon. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Thank you.